Good evening, everyone. I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, May 27, 2021. I'd like to invite Pamela Beard from Action Church of East Ridge, as she'll come forward and give us her invocation and lead us in our pledge. Everyone stand, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight for this occasion. I appreciate the honor I get to do this prayer to you, and I thank you for the opportunity. God, your hand is on East Ridge, Tennessee, and I pray that your hand remain on this, as this city, as we continue to seek you for guidance, as we go through the repairs and the decisions to move forward. God, I ask that your hand remain on each of these council members as they speak and address each item brought to them. May you impart wisdom on each of them. Let the words of my mouth, the words of our mouth, and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, my strength and my redeemer, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle. Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have a special proclamation. I would like to ask Corporal Terry Prescott if you'll come forward in council, if you'd like to come down front with us.
On behalf of the Hamilton County delegation and Governor Bill Lee O'Leary, this is a resolution to honor and commend Corporal Terry Prescott of the East Ridge Police Department. Whereas it is appropriate that the members of this General Assembly should honor those law enforcement officers who have performed with uncommon bravery and valor. And whereas Corporal Terry Prescott of the East Ridge Police Department is one such esteemable individual who has shot in the line of duty during what should have been a routine traffic stop, and whereas on October 18, 2020, Corporal Terry Prescott made a traffic stop on Ringo Road before he could exit the street middle, the driver stepped out of his car, fired several shots at Corporal Prescott's patrol car, and fled the scene. Whereas the 43-year-old law enforcement veteran sustained gunshot injuries to his face and neck, and was transported to Erlanger Hospital where he was treated and released the following day. And whereas Corporal Terry Prescott is a native of Fort Pierce, Florida, and retired from the Florida Highway Patrol in 2004 before joining the East Ridge Police Department in 2008, and whereas a member of Brainerd Baptist Church, Corporal Prescott is fortunate to share both love and companionship with his wife of 49 years, Dolores, and his two sons, his daughter and his eight grandchildren. Whereas Corporal Terry Prescott exemplifies the values of hard work, compassion, and devotion to community that are characteristic of a true Tennessean, a diligent officer of the law, and it is fitting that we recognize him at this time. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 112th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, that we honor and commend Corporal Terry Prescott of the East Ridge Police Department for his bravery and valor in the line of duty, thank him for his service to the citizens of the state, and extend our best wishes for every continued success in happiness. Congratulations and thank you.
So also, on behalf of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, I have a proclamation for you. I won't read it in detail, but I'm very proud to honor you with a proclamation of Terry Prescott, age 17. He read your, what was that, your last day that you will be serving us as Corporal here. We appreciate your dedication and service to our city. Words can't express how much we appreciate you.
All right. You were the Rock City, 17. Thank you. Thank you.
I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes for May 13, 2021 council meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have approval by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any corrections, additions, comments? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to item five, communications of citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen or business owner to come forward, address the council with any questions, concerns, accolades. We had a signing sheet, don't have anybody, but we'll still offer an opportunity, anyone in the audience that'd like to come forward at this time, and they will have five minutes. I don't see anyone. We'll move to communication of council members. We'll start on this side. Councilmember Witt.
I just want to thank everybody that came out for the volunteer meeting for the 100 Year Celebration on Tuesday, and we're hoping to have some more volunteers before the time actually comes to do this on September 25.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
I have nothing, Mayor.
All right. So I have a few things, as usual. First, I'd like for everyone to keep Mike Carter's family in your thoughts and prayers. Mike passed away Saturday, May 15. He served in the Tennessee House for, since 2012. He was a well-respected judge and also served as Hamilton County General Sessions Judge from '97 to 2005. We very much appreciate his service to our county and our state. He will be surely missed. The next one I have was the Red Wolves home opener was May 22. It was a big win for the Red Wolves. The game was amazing. The lights were awesome. It was a first-night game. The end of the game was electrifying, the one in less than two minutes at the end of the, with some stoppage time, so it was, it was great. And the sunset, if you've seen the picture, the sunset behind the stadium was amazing that night, but, so that was awesome. This Saturday night at 7:00 will be the next home game, so if you can make it, I hope to see everyone there. Also, I wanted to mention Monday, 41st Memorial Day, we will have the Memorial Day event here at City Hall. It'll be at 1:00. Everyone's invited, and hope we can see everyone here. And then the last that I have is East Ridge City Library. They're doing the outdoor storytime Tuesday, June 1, from 10:30 to 11:15. Registration is required, so join them for stories, music, bring a blanket or chairs. You will need to give them a call, 867-7323, or email DConway@eastridgeten.gov to register for the program. And that's all that I have. City Manager Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much either tonight. I just want to real quickly start by thanking the council for coming out to the budget workshop we had, the middle of this week. It was very productive. We were able to get through all the budget and hear the, some of the departments talk about some of the needs that they have and give you all some, you know, some information to make some informed decisions, so we appreciate that. At the moment, we have a second workshop, for a follow-up workshop scheduled for June 3. It's on the agenda. That way, if we decide that we do not need that, then we can go ahead and cancel it, but for right now, it is still scheduled for June 3. In addition to that, tomorrow at 11:30, we are going to thank our employees and do a cookout out here behind City Hall for our employees from 11:30 to 1:30. The council is obviously invited to come to that. We think it's important to let them know, you know, we do appreciate our employees and everything that they do for us, and our Assistant Police Chief is going to be Grill Master, so he says. So I guess the Fire Department didn't want to do it after we harassed them too much last time because the person did it, got burnt, so. Long story, but we are looking forward to that tomorrow. Hopefully, the weather will, will last for us to have it before the rain. It's supposed to rain tomorrow afternoon, I think, at some point, so we're hoping to be able to do that, but that's all I have.
Thank you. And I mentioned, till you remind me if I didn't mention the budget workshop, yes, thank you all, council, for coming and attending. We do have a balanced budget, but there are some requests for some additional funding, and so this was a great opportunity for the department heads to come forward and explain their wants and their needs, and we'll all need to reconvene and decide if we need to have our, as you mentioned, our second budget workshop. So more information will come if we will continue or if we will cancel that, cancel that, if I say it right. Thank you, sir. We have no old business, so I'll move to new business. Item A, Resolution 3150.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing participation by the City of East Ridge in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as City Manager Dorsey and I pointed out during the last City Council meeting, basically this cooperative will allow the city to purchase just not only IT goods, but also other goods such as athletic equipment, office equipment, equipment by leveraging the collective buying power of other C agencies, whether it be police departments, fire departments, cities, towns throughout the U.S. discount. This resolution is actually tied to the second one because the Waypoint contract, MSA, the Master Service Agreement, agreement, we're not obligated to purchase anything under that agreement, but by joining this collective, if we do purchase anything, Waypoint is a member of it, so we would actually be purchasing items at discount as well as in services, too.
Right, and we'll talk more about the Waypoint one here in a second, but this purchasing collect, cooperative purchasing agreement, there's, there's a few purchasing alliances out there that the City of East Ridge is part of, and it is, it is allowed under state law to be able to, to join these cooperatives because they've already done the bidding for us on certain items, sort of like with a state contract where they've done the bidding and we're able to purchase off the state contract. So this, this does fall within the purview of state law with the purchasing procedures, so.
Right, and that's basically why I'm coming before you tonight, to ask you guys to approve the resolution so we can join it.
Okay, thank you. So this one's actually for the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, NCPA, correct?
Yes.
And the next one is the Waypoints, which we'll get to in a minute. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3150.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3150.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item B, Resolution Number 3151.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to enter into a master services agreement with Waypoint Solutions for services regarding information technology.
Basically, Waypoint is an IT service company that I've been talking to about redesigning the city's network, helping improve its infrastructure, replacing outdated equipment, firewalls, the wireless in various buildings, and also helping secure the various city systems, firewalls, wireless access, helping improve things. As part of this agreement, we're not obligated to purchase anything, whether it be actual item from them such as hardware or even a service from them. Basically, it's just they're allowed me to continue to talk to them, and if the city does decide to purchase any products or services from them, it basically states who's responsible for what, insulation, any labor costs if they were to come on site to do any work.
And if it's over $10,000, obviously, any of those purchases would come to the City Council for approval.
Yeah, anything over $10,000, I would come to y'all.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3151.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 3151.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item number C.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Resolution Number 3152.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the revenue contract between the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, and the City of East Ridge to process the conversion request cer, request certain property located in Camp Jordan pursuant to 36 CFR 59. Mayor and Commissioner, or Mayor and Council, excuse me, this one is a process that's been going on for about two years now, and, and we, we're, we've been waiting on the environmentals. I did speak with the environmentalist today, and she indicated that she hopes to have her portion of the environmental assessment completed by maybe as early as tomorrow, if not early next week. And so at this point, the, the city, we've, there's been resolutions passed already related to the efforts to move forward with the conversion. This will be the contract to officially submit the information to TDEC for purposes of going through the review process and hopefully subsequent approval.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3152.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to item D, Resolution 3153.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept and record the terms of the notice of limitation of use regarding the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation Local Parks and Recreation Fund grant.
Assistant City Manager Custer, can we say that a few more times?
Yeah, I know. Say it while you can, right? So the NOU is the Notice of Limitation of Use that we will put on the playground splash pad as part of the, the grant, is what we discussed at the last meeting. It'll just make sure and ensure that when that's recorded, it'll be maintained as a park for in perpetuity. So it's just a formality that has to happen when anytime you accept grant funds as it relates to parkland.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And there's one error that needs to be corrected on here. The, in the caption, it's the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. Mr. Litchford. You're welcome.
All right, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 3153.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 3153.
Second.
Do we need to have that motion and second to, for the correction?
I can, that's just a typo error. I'm not too worried about that.
Okay, all right.
We can move forward.
All right, we have, we have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to item E, Resolution Number 3154.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving amendment to contract for Tally Construction Company for additional street improvements on North Max Smith Road.
Mayor and Council, if you'll recall back in September of 2020, we approved a contract for Tally Construction to do some resurfacing projects for us around the McDonald, McDonald Road, Hilton, and we ran into some, a little bit of a delay due to an open cut that needs to be done on Hilton Drive. Once they finish a project, everybody that's been done by Wallys has seen this, where they've done a large bore under Ringo Road, the WWTA had to do a large bore under I-75. The next part is actually go do the open cut on Hilton, well, because that's part of our paving program and part of their paving program. We didn't want to pay mobilization, demobilization, and remobilization to go out and get this project done, so it did create a little bit of a delay, but by creating that delay, we've realized that some efforts need to be undertook for the access of, or the access around the Spring Creek and North Max Smith area across from the hospital. The original tally amount was for $1,666, 640, or $640, and the city desires to amend the tally contract to include work in the above amount for $314,957.14, and that will include resurfacing sidewalks, drainage, and landscaping.
And electrical conduits.
Yeah, and conduit.
And lighting, which we will do the lighting later because it'll be cheaper for us to be able to purchase the lights ourselves, depending on which contract, you know, which, which either state contract or one of our purchasing alliances to be able to get them, as opposed to having to work that through the contractor, it's just, or EPB.
Or EPB, yes.
It'd be cheaper for us to do it ourselves.
Yes, we want to get this part rolling and then move into another, another contract or another purchasing agreement as it relates to the lighting, but this is important for us to get started, to get, get scheduled, work that in in between activities that are going on to enhance and make sure that that access is acceptable.
And as Assistant City Manager Custer said, the, by the fact that it was, the contract's sort of been delayed a little, we were able to add this into the contract, which does allow for us to put additions within it.
Yes.
So just the timing happened to work out for us.
And we are still going to pave McDonald Road and all that. I know the residents down there are ready for us, and we wanted to really dive in and get that done, and we did have the plan to kind of close off that area of state line. That's still not completely out of the question, but it may require a little bit of engineering and, and some more work to be able to do that, but we are going to stay with the original plan to go ahead and do the resurfacing that needs to be done, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sirs. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3154.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3154.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item F, Resolution 3155.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a temporary special events beer permit for Randy Carpenter on behalf of Clyde Masters Productions for a firefighter's benefit concert.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Randy Carpenter, who's the owner of Family Concessions, who operates all the concessions in the park and for the city, has applied for a temporary special events permit to be able to serve alcohol at the Clyde Masters Firefighter Benefit Concert, June 5, in the park at the amphitheater. This is a Jimmy Buffett tribute concert. Staff recommends approving this request.
Quick, one quick clarification, you said alcohol. It's beer, correct?
Beer.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3155.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. I believe we have a, an addendum to add?
Yes.
All right, so this would be item G. We had it as F, but I think it's actually going to be G. So it's Resolution Number 3156.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to approve the purchase of a cathodic protection easement by the Colonial Pipeline Company.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we were approached by Colonial Pipeline Company. As some of you may know, the, the actual gas pipeline runs through Camp Jordan on its way up to the northeast. Well, no, the branch comes off here, I'm sorry. That comes into here, but it's the same Colonial Pipeline that does flow up to the northeast, the company. With that being said, they had, have come to us to get a very small easement to be able to put in a cathodic protection easement. And so what the cathodic protection equipment does, it's catho, it basically has positive and negative electricity, where they, they put this into, inject it somehow into, inside the pipe to limit corrosion for when the gas is flowing through that, through that pipe. And this is something that they do in other places, and the reason they want the easement in addition to what they already have is if they put this piece of equipment, it looks like a big electrical panel, is what it basically looks like. If they put this equipment right where their easement is now, you're right in the middle of the field. And with working with Colonial Pipeline, this will put it a little more off to the side, near, there's a power pole over there near where the coloot, the canoe launches with the confluences of the west and south Chickamauga Creek right over near there, and it'd sort of be out of the way, near a tree that's over there, so it, it just makes sense for us and for them to be able to do this. In addition, they would be paying us, purchasing the easement for $1,000, and then when the work is all done, they would make, also make a $1,000 donation to the Parks Department.
Okay.
It helps us by keeping it out of the middle of the field as well.
Right. Yeah, I was looking at the diagram on the back page to see where, in reference to where it's located. All right.
I probably did a horrible job explaining it, but I'm not a scientist, so that's the best I could do.
But I didn't realize that the pipeline came through East Ridge at all, let alone Camp Jordan. All right, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3156.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 3156.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, well, next item is the discussion of the tentative agenda for June 10, 2021 council meeting. So under the tentative agenda, we have no old business. Under new business, we have an unnumbered ordinance, the approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget first reading.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We would have this be the, as we said, the first reading of the budget. You have to have two readings of ordinances for them to take effect, so the first reading would be on June 10, and the second reading would be on June 24. There also needs to be a second ordinance added to this, which would be the tax ordinance, the general revenue ordinance for the city. So that would be another unnumbered ordinance that we would also include.
All right, thank you, sir. Any discussion, council? I see none. So then, you want to go ahead and just talk about the tax ordinance immediately after this one?
Sure, I can talk about it as, as, right now, since we've talked about adding it in.
Okay.
Basically, the, the tax ordinance is the general, it's the general revenue ordinance of the city, where we bring that to the council, and that's where they, they set what the property tax rate's going to be. This year, it's a little different because of the reappraisal process and the recertification of the, the tax rate, so basically, it's going to be like an interim tax rate ordinance to keep, you know, to, and we'll talk about that time, to, to set a rate until we get the certified rate in August, and then we would have another ordinance to take care of a tax rate then.
Okay.
It's like a two-step process because you have the recertification going on this year. It's like a two-step process because you have the recertification going on this year.
All right, thank you, sir. Any discussion, council? See none. Then we would have another unnumbered ordinance, the budget amendment first reading.
Yes, sir. This will be our final one for FY 2021. We will at that time take care of the police car that y'all approved the purchase of, and then any other housekeeping that we need to do for the final one. Don't expect anything unusual, just regular stuff.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion, council?
And this would be the normal yearly one that we do to clean up the budget for the year.
Every June, we get to do one.
Right.
Yep. I'm glad you clarified that. It said budget amendment. I'm like, we just approve it and then we're going to amend it?
Right, exactly.
This is with the previous.
Correct, the year we're in now, the current FY 21 budget, yes.
This is when we have fun, we're in two years, you know.
Yes. All right, that's all we have on the new business for the tentative agenda for the next council meeting. Council, do you have any other items you'd like to address?
Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
See nothing else. Yes, have a very happy, safe, and fun long weekend, and meeting adjourned. Thank you for attending.